Residents of Florida and the surrounding areas that are dealing with devastation and loss, but we especially think about those cities and towns trying to rebuild themselves. We think about all the emergency workers, both those that are local and those that have come from all over the country to help. We just thank you, Lord, that we live in a place where people will stop and drop and come and do what they can to help one another. That's a characteristic of our community too, and we're especially grateful for that. So tonight, as we look at the salaries of our city employees, as we look at the things that we can do to help improve the life of our citizens by the measures that we pass, we just ask that we keep in mind that we are so very blessed and we are thankful for that. In the name of Jesus, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Diane. I saw today where the Sanibel City Council is having their final budget hearing tonight at a hotel somewhere inland. So the council didn't miss a beat. Unfortunately, that community's gonna take a long time to come back, but it was pretty interesting. Mayor's giving updates every night at 6:30 on Facebook and there's a lot of mayors and councils and communities that are moving ahead. And state seems to be doing a pretty good job. I think the federal government, they're all there and never seen anything like it. So got a lot to be thankful for, I guess, is kind of my point. At any rate, let the minutes show that Cindy is absent. There are six councilmen here, councilors here, so we do have a quorum. We'll start with the approval of the minutes from the September 19 meeting. And those were presented in your board pack.
I move to approve.
I'll second it.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'll abstain, I wasn't here.
All right. Passes five to zero with one abstention.
Jerry.
Two. Two. Passes four to nothing.
Jerry wasn't here either.
Two abstentions.
Jerry and Josh.
And Mike.
You can review them on law if you can.
Yeah. No, I'll vote in favor of it, that's fine.
All right.
So Jerry and Mike abstain.
Right, and it passed four to zero. All right. Welcome to our visitors tonight, all friendly faces it appears. Lynn, no reports.
No, I don't have reports.
Present. We don't have any unfinished business, so let's just jump right into new business. Hal, you're first up. Got Resolution 2022-1001, a transfer of funds.
Yes, a word for approval. This basically is just money to move in. If perfect world with fuel and everything and nothing happens, I'd probably make it to the end of the year, but it's awful close, so I'm asking if we put a little bit in for fuel in '22 and then the other is maintenance with late season coming and an extra $2,000 in there is what I'm trying to do. This 36 account that it came out of was for tree removal for damage, which I didn't have. We just had one tree that we had to work on this year, so I ask for your approval to move that money.
So $4,000 from 360 into 220 and $2,000 from 230.
$4,002 into 22 and $2,000 into 23.
23, got it.
Yep.
All right. Questions?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
All right. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, thanks Hal. Jeremy, got a couple, excuse me, tax abatements here tonight.
Yes, there's two tax abatements, both of them from Zimmer Biomet. The first one being Biomet Manufacturing at 56 East Bell Drive. It's a new tax abatement request. They are looking at adding 1.5 million in personal property at that location and are asking for a 10-year tax abatement to be granted for that personal property. The second one is at 1800 West Center Street under Zimmer, Inc., and this is both a real and a personal property tax abatement request. They are looking at adding 28 and a half million dollars in real and personal property improvements to that location and is also requesting a 10-year tax abatement. These would be our standard 10-year tax abatement. I need to give Lynn a spreadsheet on that, but they'd just be the standard 10-year.
You need to do the schedule?
Yeah, I didn't do those yet.
That's the biggest number I've ever received.
It's also for 1535 West Center Street.
Yes.
So Jeremy, just to break it down a little bit, the building five out on West Center of that total 20, it looks like 28 million, was it equipment?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, half a million in what I would assume is remodeling interior.
Right.
I believe they're adding any square footage.
It's a pretty significant investment.
Glad to see it.
Yep.
I make the motion that we approve the abatements, both of them.
All right.
I gladly second that.
All right.
Did you say both, Diane?
Yes.
All three of them?
All right, are there any further questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, thanks Jeremy. All right, ask Denny to come forward. We're gonna present on first reading tonight, three salary ordinances, the general, the police and fire. Danny's got a presentation I'm gonna pull up here. Danny, just tell me when you want me to click.
Okay.
I can do that. All right.
All right, go. Click the question there. We'll start off with the general salary ordinance. What you see on the screen are just the changes that were made to the salary ordinance that are different than what we done in the past year. We landed with a 4% increase across the board for everybody's wages. Our health insurance increased by 2%. That fee will be shared between the employees and the city. The employee will continue to pay 5% of the premiums. We added one position to the street department, an assistant to the superintendent, as they now have more than one admin assistant down there. It was important that we separate those two roles and Dustin has somebody who he can rely on to do that extra administrative stuff and look over the offices. It was also recommended by the wage committee to increase the per meeting wages for board members from $30 to $50 per meeting. And we use new language in our co-op intern at the bottom. The old language tied us into paying minimum wage to co-op and intern students. The new wage will give the department heads the discretion on what to pay them as long as it stays under the salary ordinance. I didn't feel it's fair to pay them minimum wage when they go to McDonald's, make $14 an hour. If we wanna start grooming that next generation, we gotta start there.
I would just add, I believe 4% is the largest increase that we've seen, at least since I've been mayor. And I believe Councilman Jeff, can you think of any year where it was? I remember we did a three and a half one year.
Yeah, the only way would have been for some of the lower income when we did dollar amounts.
Yeah, when we adjusted.
But that is, that's very, I can't remember.
And we all know what inflation's doing and I wish we could do more, but our levy is not allowed to grow any greater. Lynn, what's our growth course of this year?
4.2?
4.2. So that's what we've got and, you know, we're gonna have to tighten the belt a little to make this work, but I think it's important, what Denny mentioned, you know, we've got great city employees and we need to show them that we value them. So other questions or comments?
I'd just like to make a comment on behalf of the wage committee. We were very appreciative of you taking a good look at the midterm and getting the salaries where they needed to be according to the Wagner study and it's gratifying to see that that held true and that there weren't any positions that were asked for any kind of increase and really the only change we had was the difference of adding a position. But there, you know, it's in terms of what we have, it seems to all be in line with how the department heads feel and the employees are feeling that they should currently be paid. And so I just wanna thank everybody for their hard work earlier that brought us to this point now where we don't see those big changes at this time of year.
Others?
Danny, these employee contributions, that's per month, correct?
Per month, correct.
For medical and dental and vision.
Yes, ma'am.
And those have remained at 5% and I think you mentioned it up there. Health insurance, employee contribution is 5% of the total premium. So it's gone up, but it's stayed at that percentage as our insurance has gone up. So I, and Diane, I'm glad you mentioned the wage study. We've been working for many years to try and create some equitable salary structure for all of our employees and, you know, we've always said we can't do it all at once. And I know this last year, we got our employees taken care of. I think it's worth mentioning, we'll be considering elected official salaries from that study, that same study that looked at surrounding communities a little bit later, probably in November. But for right now, we're focusing on the general salary ordinance, police and fire. So we'll start with the general salary ordinance. Any final comments, Danny?
No, sir. Again, I thank you guys for your work too. It's made my life a lot easier in the HR department, but happy employees makes a happy life for me too, so I appreciate you guys doing that.
So what I would ask for, as you consider, all three of these ordinance, we'll do one at a time, but on first reading tonight and then we'll come back at our next meeting and make the final, second final reading.
I wanna thank the committee. I think you guys have done a terrific job. This has been a years-long process that we embarked on, gosh, maybe four, five years ago, six years ago, I can't remember exactly, but.
Eight years.
Yeah, my first year, the first term.
About eight years, right?
Yeah.
It's been a journey, it's been a journey, but I think we're really honing in on it and I think we're doing it the right way. So thank you, everybody up here, everybody. It's, yeah, and I think it goes without saying that our employees are our most important asset, you know? Without them, the city doesn't function.
I'd like to say that I think we, for whatever reason, years ago, got maybe into a little bit of a hole and it takes a while to get out. And it just takes addressing it every year.
Right.
And it seems, it seems that we are almost finally in the glory land, you know? But we gotta, we gotta stay on it, we gotta keep our nose to the grindstone and make sure that it doesn't get away from us again.
I guess with that, I would, since nobody else is commenting, I would move that we approve ordinance 2022-1003.
On first reading?
On first reading.
Thanks, Jack. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, passes on first reading, six to zero. All right, item four would be the 2020, ordinance 2022-1004, which would be the 2023 police salary. If you move to that, you'll also see the increases. I'll let Danny go ahead and talk about that. Whoops.
One more.
One more, okay. All right, a little out of order, but there we go.
All right, so the police salary, you'll see that we made, again, 4%, and that is to the base salary that didn't go into the rank incentives or anything like that. We did a good bump on that at mid-year, so we felt that it was important that we get their base salary, the 4%. We also increased the board member pay at $50 per meeting from 30. The police have, Chief Whittaker requested to add drone operator to a $500 a year stipend. They have to get certified to be able to fly the drone. And then also, he would like to add a stipend for defensive tactics instructor at $500 a year. We did add language that limits stipends to a max of three per employee. As you can see, the police department's got a wide array of special skills that their officers can go to school for. We just wanna make sure that we get those specialties and are able to use those skills that they get paid for. And then again, we changed the language on the co-op intern, the same as the general salary, to where the department head has the ability to set those wages.
In pretty similar keeping with the 4% increase on the base pay, maintaining that 5% of the total insurance of employee contribution, and then all the items that are yellowed on your salary ordinance are the changes. Questions?
I move to approve ordinance 2022-1004 on first reading.
Thanks, Jeff. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Josh. All right, any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ordinance 2022-1004, passes on first reading, six to zero. Now, item number five would be ordinance 2022-1005. This would be the 2023 fire salary ordinance. Danny?
Okay, again, 4% increase on the base pay. We did not do anything with the rank incentive, as we did a good job on that mid-year. Health insurance, again, was an increase of 2% shared between the city and the employee, just like as the previous two. The big one with the fire is we increased the EMS chief by 14, 0.5%. We feel that he, his job wasn't, his job description didn't encompass all the things that he does for the city. So at the mid-year increases last year, he did not get any increase at all. But that position is critically important to our fire department and what they do. So in order to kind of right that wrong a little bit, we asked that he can be bumped up to equal footing with the battalion chiefs. We did add two different stipends, public safety education team member to $500 a year. That is for the firemen that love to go into the schools and teach the kids fire safety and do the public offerings for fire safety. And then we've added a $25 per shift stipend to any firefighter that is performing as an officer for that shift. So a lot of times, the shifts will be short in officer. If somebody's on vacation or has to call out sick or whatever reason, the fireman that jumps up into that seat, we wanna make sure that they get a little something for taking on those extra responsibilities during that shift, so. Again, increased board member and recording secretary pay from $30 to $50 per meeting. Use new language with the co-op interns, so the department heads can decide that compensation. And then added language to limit stipends to a max of three per employee.
All right, questions? Again, 4% increase in the base pay. Pretty similar changes from the first two police and general that we looked at. Mike, anything from you? I know you sit on the fire territory board.
Our guys earn every penny and as that board member representing council, I would make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-10-05 on first reading.
I'll second that.
This is Mike, was that Jerry? All right. Any further comments or discussions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, ordinance 2022-1005, passes on first reading, six to zero. All right, Danny, thank you for all your work. I mentioned that, you know, we've worked hard many, many years to try and get the salaries equitable and I know Jennifer had a big part in that, but Danny's jumped in and certainly understands the importance of that as well and I know he's committed to making sure our employees are fairly compensated and thank you for all your work, Danny, appreciate it.
You know, Mayor, I just, again, wanna reiterate that this is such a fact-based way to do this. And when I first came on, it was, oh, let's pick 2% or let's pick 3%. We were just kind of throwing darts at the board and this is such a great way. We've really made a lot of strides, again, to the salary committee and mayor and this board and the help of HR. I hope this city council future going forward never goes back to the old way. This is a much better way. I'm really pleased with what we've been able to accomplish as a group.
All right, thank you, Mike. All right, our final item on the agenda tonight is ordinance 2022-1002. This is actually a public hearing regarding electric vehicle charging stations. Becca, why don't you just go ahead and talk about the background, how this all came to be, what our requirements are to install these stations and what we've done and what we'll do looking forward.
Yeah, so in 2020, we agreed.
Pull the mic down a little so everybody can hear you.
In 2020, we agreed to apply for a grant through MACOG for the Volkswagen, Indiana, Indiana Volkswagen Environmental Mitigation Trust program. And part of that grant agreement was that we would install electric vehicle charging stations and eventually we would get paid back through IDEM for a portion of that. Part of the grant also requires that we provide free charging for the first two years, for the first two hours. And so this ordinance kind of looks at how the city can make some money back to pay our electrical bills if someone charges for more than two hours within those first two years, as well as after those first two years. So moving forward, the goal is that these stations are sustainable financially for the city and as well as providing a service for our residents. So in section one, it defines who can park in an electric vehicle charging stall, so it excludes non-electric vehicles as well as electric vehicles that are not charging. And that section also permits the finding and towing of those unlawfully parked vehicles. Section two defines the fees, so it was suggested through MACOG that we do a blanket fee of $2 per hour. Generally, the cost of electricity to charge a vehicle is about a dollar per hour, as well as any demand charges and meter fees through NIPSCO, so this would help create financial sustainability for the city to keep operating these after the two years of free charging for the first two hours.
Becca, can you talk a little bit about how much that grant funded those charging stations?
Yes, so the grant will pay us back 9,000 per charging station and MACOG has put the money upfront and we're paying MACOG back and then IDEM will pay us back. And MACOG also fronted $500 to help in the aid of implementing and the construction of the charging stations.
How much do they cost to put in?
To put in with the current situation that is the world, it was about $24,000 just for the implementation and construction, including the striping and wiring. And the stations, I believe, are around 9,000 each. So the IDEM portion will cover the stations.
And where is it?
There is one north of the courthouse, right there on the corner of Buffalo and Fort Wayne.
Maine.
Maine, and one in the parking lot near Expressions.
Becca's done a lot of work to get this done. I know part of that Volkswagen settlement gave us the opportunity to get this done and that those grants are certainly got this thing kick-started. I know in the community, we've got several charging stations. I think out at the Wyndham Garden, there's two or three.
I think two.
Two. And then, is there one over at Grace College?
I'm not sure.
I think there's a couple over there, but there aren't many stations. Lynn, you mentioned Nissan has got one, yeah. So they're starting to pop up, but the state had a grant and it was, I don't remember the amount, but they put charging stations along the interstates in Indiana and US 30 is not an interstate, so there are no charging stations along US 30. So I think probably pretty important, given that people are starting to buy electric cars, that we have the infrastructure here to be able to at least get started with this.
Does the grant require that we re-change them or maintain them for a certain number of years? Like if we find that they're not even used, do we have the ability to remove them or are we committed forever?
That's a good question. I'm unsure if the grant extends past the two-year mark. However, it does say that if the charging station is not operating correctly, it needs to be fixed within 72 hours. It doesn't say whether that extends past the two years or not, but my assumption would be that this is the way that all of the major car manufacturers are creating electric vehicles now. And so whether or not we want to keep it going, I believe it will get used in the future and we'll want to maintain it.
I believe it. It's our property. We were just given grants to offset the cost, to defray the cost of putting it in, initial capital expenditure.
So the initial outlay is pretty much a wash as far as we're concerned, or are we?
A wash, how do you mean?
I mean, money we put in is money we're getting back, that sort of thing, or are we investing in?
We're investing, but we're being subsidized to, what, 9,000 each?
Mm-hmm.
And then this additional thousand from MACOG, so $19,000. It sounded like the total was about 42.
Something like that, yeah.
To do everything, so.
Yeah, I was adding up, it looked like we were 23,000 or 24,000 that the city was putting into it.
At the end of the two years, is there, is there an opportunity then to recoup a little bit more of that back? I mean, just.
And that's what this ordinance is contemplating, $2, $2 an hour and the cost of electricity is roughly a dollar an hour. So there is some money in there for maintenance.
For maintenance.
Are they up and running?
I don't know. They are not up and running yet. They have to be by the end of the year, but we're working on waiting on NIPSCO for a few things, waiting on our contractor for a few things and waiting for this ordinance to pass as well.
Okay.
What would be the, I don't, I know nothing about electric vehicles, so does it take two hours to charge? Does it take 10? I mean, somewhere in the middle?
Typically, yeah, for this level of charger, it would take about eight hours. And so we have to provide the first two hours for free. However, if we charge an hourly rate after the two hours, then we can start to recoup some of our costs as well as. some of our costs, as well as more people can use it. And it also just gets electric vehicle owners used to paying for electricity after the, the two years is up. They'll have to pay for every hour if this ordinance passes. So getting them used to that as well.
I know we're kind of getting into the weeds, but when you pull up to one of these stations and the first two hours are free, and if you leave your car longer than two hours, have you already put in a credit card that it's going to start charging your credit card?
Yeah, it's linked to an account through an app on your phone.
Oh, clever, okay, even better. Huh, interesting, so.
And we're not going to chalk the wheels and make them leave in two hours, right?
No.
They can stay.
We want them to, we want them to stay.
They can. They'll be charged for the charging.
So I was recently with a friend who has an electric vehicle, and we were traveling, and his Maps app shows where other charging stations are as you drive along, and it also give recommendations, like you might want to stop here, you're going to run out of electricity type of thing. So I think it could be good for the downtown as far as someone might stop and eat lunch and top off, or give another whatever percent of, you know, 1/8 or 1/4 of their battery charge while they're eating lunch downtown. But also, like Becca said, I think if people knew there was a place to charge in Warsaw, they would maybe make a habit of stopping here if they were running between two places. But, so I think, I love the idea of it being right downtown. And then Becca was really smart about, when she talked to me about the ordinance, we don't really want to make money off of finding anybody. We want the spaces to be available for those people to be able to charge their vehicles. So the idea that if someone isn't supposed to be in that spot, that you can tow them out of that spot so that charging vehicles that need charged can use the four spots we have available in town, I thought that was really clever. I could have made sure we had that.
The two spots at the, is it, did you say the Wyndham?
Yes.
Is, can you only use that if you're a customer of the hotel?
I can't answer that.
Okay, because that, I could see where, you know, if that's free to the public and they're not charging, then why would anybody pay when?
My guess is they've got an app, or if you're staying there and you type in the code, maybe you don't, I really don't know, but, you know, again, I mean, if somebody goes three hours on ours, we're going to make $2, and at a dollar an hour, we've, we've lost $1. If they go four hours, now we made $1. So it's, and that's just for the first two years. Yeah. I think, like Scott said, you know, it does get us a spot on the map. And I know we've got a lot of business in this community, got a lot of industry, and I would assume that there are people that drive electric cars into our community.
I've seen several.
Yeah.
There are a lot.
Daily.
There are a lot.
And this may sound like a nitpicky question, but just, I'm assuming we wouldn't find somebody if they had their car plugged in and it happened to be all the way charged and they're 15 minutes, they come back 15 minutes later and it's not still charging. I mean, it would be only if they weren't plugged in, right?
Correct.
Okay.
I like it.
It's going to be interesting. I mean, it's quite a change from what we're all used to. And it's, I'm sure we'll make mistakes as we go, but we can, we can always react, and it's a start.
And we're being proactive doing this.
Do you know how many communities MACOG helped out with this, Becca?
Um, municipalities, there were three, including us, but I believe there were five or six different organizations that benefited from the grant.
In the whole state?
In the.
Just the Ford County MACOG area.
Gotcha, okay.
I think this was a great way to get started.
Yeah.
It is.
Well, if I may, I'd make a motion to approve this ordinance 2022-10-02.
Oh, we have to.
We have a public hearing. I was going to let you go, but.
Thank you.
Any more questions of Becca before I open it up for the public? All right, with that, I will open this hearing up to the public and ask if there's anyone who wishes to speak in favor of ordinance 2022-1002. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? All right. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to ordinance 2022-1002? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? All right, hearing none. I will close the public hearing portion of the meeting and send it back to the council for their action on first reading. And again, we'll be back here at the next meeting to take a final vote, but I'd like to get first reading tonight and get your, any more thoughts before we do that? All right, Mike, I think you've spoken up.
I would make a motion that we jump into the future by approving ordinance 2022-10-02.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Jeff wishes to jump into the future as well.
I won't, but my friends will. I have several that like.
As long as we don't stop the clock of the courthouse, it's okay.
That's right.
And we see DeLorean.
All right, any final comments or questions?
When's the city going to get their first electric car?
Well, we need charging stations first. All right. All right.
We can justify it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, ordinance 2022-1002 passes six to zero on first reading. And stay tuned, we'll be back next month to finish.
Watch out.
Finish all of these. All right, any other matters come before the council?
I have one. I wanted to say this publicly. I had several people come to me and thank the Department of Public Works and also the cemetery in the park as they assisted with the cleanup after the recent storms. They were amazed at how quickly the roads were cleared and debris was taken away. I know a lot of it went to live it house and get cut up, but, you know, just, they were very appreciative of the quick response of the city employees, their professionalism, their willingness to go a little bit above and beyond. A couple of the people that contacted me were elderly, and they got a little extra help getting their branches where they needed to be so they could be picked up. And so I just wanted to publicly thank our departments that all pulled together and helped clean up after our recent storms.
Thanks, Diane. There was some pretty significant damage, and it wasn't that noticeable because it was, Mike, down your way and.
Yeah, it was in my.
Other side of Ranch Road, there was, back in there, Mary Mac, there was some, there were some tough, tough situations there. A lot of, a lot of big limbs down, so thank you, Diane. Anybody else? I'll just report that Bronson Street Crossing is done. Thank you. Now, we got plenty, plenty more to work on, so.
Thank you.
Anyway, it's kind of nice. All right, any comments or questions from our visitors?
Friday is the Fall Family Fun Fest out at Lucerne Park for the parks, and it's always a great time, so.
It'll be a good one.
Yeah.
I think it's also Chili Cook-Off on First Friday.
Mm-hmm.
For guest chili cookers.
Lot to do this weekend, for sure. All right, well, is there a motion to adjourn?
Salute.
Second.
Thank you. I don't believe we have anything to sign, do we, Lynn? I do, all right.
We don't.
That's fair.
You do.
Becca, thank you. All right.